Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's meeting. I'm sitting in for Mayor Travis. First thing I'd like to ask, are there any agenda changes?
Council President, we would ask that an executive session be added under Section F of the Agenda for preliminary discussion related to the acquisition of real property exception be added to the agenda, and then that would be our only change from staff this evening.
All right, thank you. With that, calling on public forum and seeing nobody seated out here, we will move on. And next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda for November 14, 2022 as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. And we have no unfinished business this evening. We have item one under new business is discussion on a public hearing on distressed property. Ethan, you want to?
Yeah, if you just want to formally open that, Mr. Council President, and just note the time, please.
Okay, yeah, so we've got the public hearing on, I'd like to open the public hearing on our distressed property at 126 East Third.
Thank you. And just, it's at 7:06 PM. So basically, this is the Townsmen or the former Townsmen motel property. You all have seen previously the inspection report that the city had commissioned way back in January of 2022. Again, that didn't actually have the inspector in the building or anything, but there was noted concerns, especially concerning the roof vegetation that had grown up and around the foundation. Obviously, the property owner is out of state and could not be here this evening. I did have opportunity to talk to him on the phone today, as you all may be aware, especially with the sign that's been posted at the property. It is currently up for auction. He asked that the council consider delaying any formal action or further action beyond just this public hearing until after that auction would be closed, which is set for December 1st. Doesn't mean that the property would be sold by any stretch, but there is the potential that the property could be sold in that process. I did inform him that was up to you all and your decision regarding that. He indicated that he had had his contractors go through the building, and they also thought the roof could definitely use some TLC, but did not think the rest of the structure really was anything other than mostly cosmetic. This procedure, just for you all, can consider blight and the blighting influence a property would have on the surrounding neighborhood. But other than that, I will turn it over to Brad to kind of discuss options at this point we can do as far as you can choose to continue it. You can maybe get into more specifics of what you'd like to be done, but this is largely going to be up to you all.
Yeah, in this particular instance, we've noticed it up, and statutorily where we are this evening is you serve as the fact finders, take any evidence or ask any questions that you might have if you choose to do that. The owner at this particular point is participatory to the extent that he's had the conversation with the city manager and requested the continuance, and his reason is generally valid. If you, you know, if they were subject to a current pending contract for sale and purchased by another, or in this particular instance, subject to a potential sale in the form of an auction, he does, as part of this auction process, reserve the right to refuse any and all. So it's not as though this is actually going to occur like it would, for example, on Purple Wave, where you generally don't have that option, you take highest best bid, and that's it. But it's a matter of two weeks, a little over one day, and to give him that additional time is not an unreasonable request on his part. And quite frankly, I guess I need to check the language in ours. I believe it may be there, but we also have, because of the issue that used to exist where property owners would transfer to each other or family members and make the process start all over again, have a prohibition on transfer when a case has been initiated, which this one did at the passage of your original resolution and the publication. So that was all done in advance of any announcement of this, as far as I know. So I can check that again, but it probably is all moot if you choose to give it a couple of more weeks, like to the, so our next one is after the first, our next meeting.
Yeah, we'd have one.
And we wouldn't have to republish or anything. You would simply continue, a motion to continue and a vote in the majority to continue this hearing to a specified date. And then we, right where we are right now is where we would reconvene. So if that's something you wish to consider, that's probably the most pragmatic, but you're not required to do that by any means. We can take the report that was pretty thorough. And yes, as Ethan told you, it was not an interior. We typically don't do that. Our ordinance allows for it, but for many years now, the league has not been recommending that we attempt to go ahead and enter a property without permission of the owner, and many times we don't get that. So what we'll do is the, from the public property or from the curb, if you will, take an examination of the property. And there was more than enough here for it to justify this proceeding, so it was really not a necessity for us to do that.
Well, what I hear is that it's not really to our detriment to hold off until, to hold off till next meeting. On the other hand, is there anything that would work to our benefit to move forward?
Not particularly. I mean, other than the two weeks sooner.
We don't put ourselves in a better position.
No, not really. We do not.
Okay.
Because he's aware, and I believe he did get a copy of the report, did he not, when he requested it? So he's aware of what it is that we're confronted with and what you're considering. If one of two things occurs, he has some type of a bid on the auction that's acceptable, then it's preferable to deal with the new owner and get some sense of what are you going to do and when are you going to do it, rather than plowing forward. And if he doesn't get a bid to that effect, he's already on notice of what we're dealing with and has had them come out and take a look at it, them being whomever he uses. I have no idea who that is and what their credentialing might be. But either way, I don't see us losing a great deal, other than the obvious. It's two weeks down the road from today, but given how long these condition has existed and the fact that he has an auction going forward, be interesting to see what kind of interest there may be in the property. So that would impact a decision that you make as well.
So with that, I would entertain a motion to continue this.
All right. There's no further discussion. I'd like to make a motion to, or to continue the public hearing on the distressed property at 126 East Third until our next scheduled meeting, which is November 28th, 2022.
If I might suggest, since the auction doesn't close until December 1st, I would propose.
Then can we go to December 12th? Okay. Then we go to December 12th.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second on that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Reviewing the Computer Information Concepts Annual Peopleware Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. President. The CIC annual renewal is, was in your packet. The cost is $11,595 for this year. That's less than a 1% increase compared to our previous year's renewal cost. Included in that is our tech support agreement, which is pretty much, you know, as needed by staff. When they're there, the other thing that CIC includes is what they call the peopleware. This allows our staff to attend their annual symposium and throughout the year make suggestions for changes or improvements that they might want to see in the software. This has been really great, especially if we're noticing it. Usually, other CIC customers notice an issue, and we usually can get those enhancements made. So the software continuously is improved or able to be improved, depending on CIC's agreement, to better serve us, which has been pretty handy. We've trained our current new staff on it, so we don't really feel that it's a prudent move at this point with them being relatively new to try and throw a new software system at it. We're also still working out the very minor limited bugs we're still having as far as between our advanced meter interfacing with our utility meters and CIC. So we'd like to get those bugs finished, worked out as well. So staff would recommend continuing our annual agreement with CIC.
Well, you answered many questions that I had. So thank you.
Why is the quote they sent different in price than what you're asking for by $2,000?
$11,000 was last year's.
Oh.
It sounded $9,000.
I see 9560.
Yep, that should be, that should be the correct amount. I'm sorry, that's a typo on my agenda report. So I apologize for that. It should be the 9,560. So it's actually less than last year's renewal. So.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that is the old report that ended up in the agenda for some reason, not the new report.
560. Good catch.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve the annual peopleware agreement with Computer Information Concepts for an amount not to exceed $9,560 and authorize staff to sign necessary documents.
Second.
We have a first and a second on this. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, amendment petition resolution and ordinances for Cedar Meadows and Powers Edition. Got four amendments there.
Yeah, so basically, and this is something that got by both our bond council and the many sets of eyes, but basically, there is a typo in the Powers Edition. The block is actually Block A, not Block 1. Everything we have passed has referred to the Powers properties as being Block 1, lots 1 through 4. And it needs to be noted that it's technically under the plat that was adopted, Block A. So we're basically remending the amended ones of the original ones you passed, you know, almost a year ago. I tried to lay it all out there as far as the actions it needs to be. So because the city owns the Powers lots, we need to authorize the mayor to sign those benefit petitions on behalf of the city. And then following that authorization, you as the council can formally accept those benefit petitions. And then you need to approve the new resolution, which amends those other resolutions, and then finally pass that work ordinance as, or the ordinance amending the original work ordinance, and tried to write those out for you all as, as well as possible, I was hoping there was a simpler fix, but this is the recommended correction by our bond council and our city council. So sorry that we had to bring these in front of you again for a Block A versus Block 1, but we filed these twice with the Register of Deeds, and they didn't catch it the first time, they caught it the second time, so.
Well, I look at it this way. It was something that was caught, and we are thankful to be able to rectify it. And with that, we have four motions we need made here. I would be looking for a motion for the first item.
All right. Motion to approve and authorize the mayor's signature on the amended benefit district petitions for East Side Main Street sanitary sewer improvements, Main Street improvements, and Stutzman Street improvements on behalf of the city of Halsted for the city-owned property of Powers First Edition Block A, lots 1 through 4.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. Motion two. Motion for the city of Halsted to accept the amended petitions for the East Side Main Street sanitary sewer improvements, Main Street improvements, and Stutzman Street improvements.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Motion three. Motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-13, a resolution amending Resolution Number 2202 as previously amended by Resolution Number 202211 as presented.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, last but not least. Motion to approve Ordinance Number 1325 and ordinance amending Ordinance Number 1316 as previously amended by Ordinance Number 1324 as presented.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Once again, thankful that we were, that was able to be caught and we were able to rectify it.
Don't we need a, a motion to authorize the amending of the various amendments from the first amendment to the second and then the originals?
No.
Okay. I just checked.
Keep it up, Brad.
Feel needed.
Okay, item number four, Ninth and Walnut Waterline Replacement Proposal.
Thank you. In your packet, you have the proposal from Mies Construction, who was the successful bidder on the Cedar Meadows and Powers property, work for the water and sewer work that will be done as part of that. We had had a discussion with the engineer of, since we had just done a formal bidding process on a much larger project, and Mies was successful of entering with them. There was a little bit of change in how Mies is going to do the work in Cedar Meadows versus how they proposed to do it over on Walnut. This involves boring. They did believe that even though boring has more, a higher direct cost than trenching it, that actually what the city would save in terms of the tear up of yards, driveways, and the street would more than make up that cost differential. City Superintendent Adams did compare it to some other recent boring costs that the city did, and it didn't seem out of line. This would allow us to get that just geared up and ready to go as well, so we won't have the delay of having to wait for formal proposals to come in. Engineer Foraker was kind of under the impression that we're probably not going to see much deviation or a lot of competitiveness on a project that small, which is why we suggested going at. So it is up to you guys for final approval, but this would be their proposal to do that work in conjunction with when they're in here for the Powers property, either before or after that work was done. We did just recently get notice that we had approval from KDHE on that waterline replacement, so that project should be good to proceed once we have an agreement for work in place and it gets scheduled, so.
When did this start rearing itself? When did we notice that issue down there?
This is more just kind of a proactive thing. We've started to do on any major street repair of, if you're tearing up the street and inconveniencing of making sure you're addressing the water line as well. And then there's obviously some stuff coming down the pipe, too, as far as KDHE and EPA regulations regarding like lead services that the city is trying to get proactive, because we'll have to have a formal inventory of every service in the city as far as what we have that may potentially be lead, and that's largely driven by the age of the home, not necessarily, you know, things of that nature. So we're just replacing those services now, as opposed to waiting a few years and having to dig it back up. We've had only one water main break recently in that area, or two?
Well, I was going to say, in the, since my time being here, those two blocks probably have more repair clamps than the rest of the town.
Well, they are.
There you go.
It doesn't need to be done.
Okay.
What's the timeline? When are we going to start doing those roads?
Ninth and Walnut should be getting finished up as far as the engineer, and he can put that formal work out. Mies Construction, we would work that out with the final contract of what their timeline would be, but they were starting in January, or mid-January was their start date on the Powers and Cedar Meadows work. And so I imagine for mobilization, we'll see them either come in before that project or immediately after that project to do this.
So we're looking within the first quarter?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, if there's no more questions or discussion, I'd be looking for a motion on this.
I'll move to accept a proposal from Mies Construction for the Walnut Street waterline replacement work in the amount of $110,500 and authorization for staff and the contracted engineer to negotiate and execute contracts or other required documents as needed.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Sidewalk repair bids on Main Street, 200 Block of Main.
Thank you. Having their three proposals we got for work on the 200 Block of Main, this kind of came after the buckling of the sidewalk there in front of the library. Specifically, we kind of noted the ADA ramp. And around the tree had broken panels or panels that definitely present potential hazards and replacing at least the corner. As we kind of looked and realized, replacing everything that would be in front of the library, we thought, why don't we just go ahead and see from the north edge of the library's property to 208, because that's basically the only other Main Street in the 200, or sidewalk in the 200 Block of Main that would need replaced. Basically, so we asked for that as an alternate from all the bidders. The interesting thing, as the agenda item memo noted, if you're looking at just the work in front of the library, Becker Buildings quote, they're just shy of $14,000 is the lowest. If you do the larger quote, then votes Parga for the entirety of the work at just under $34,000 is the lowest for all the work. I will note, this is just, we're getting prices based on the council discussion. There's nothing that obligates us to do this work. We can rely on our existing historical policies and state statute and just address this with the adjacent property owners and send them letters saying it's your responsibility to repair your sidewalk. So this just was part of that initial discussion way back when we repaired that sidewalk buckling right at the library's entrance. So these are the costs. If the city would engage the work, we would take the money out of the general capital improvement fund, as noted, so.
It's council, I'd like to hear from other council members also. I also agree with, you know, on the residential area as far as, you know, residents taking care of the sidewalks, but this is our downtown Main Street, and I think this is probably our purview of taking care of this, is my opinion. I'd like to hear what other council members think, if we should be leaving this to the business owners downtown, or do we want to step in and take care of this?
I mean, I think there's an argument that could be made that sidewalks in general would be better off as a city project rather than the property owner, just because it's for the public benefit. With this project specifically, I think at a minimum, we need to do the library portion of it. I'd be okay with doing the remainder of it, though, too. I think we need it.
It's a, it's a big, I mean, look at the dollars, what was, $34,000.
Oh, it's an expensive undertaking.
But nonetheless, it's, I think it's a big, to me, it's a big benefit to our community and visitors that come to our town.
Are we taking the trees out of the library, the front?
Yeah, I mean, that, in my opinion, would be something we need to do. Otherwise, we're taking, I don't know that that tree is going to necessarily, in its life cycle, grow anymore, but I would hate to jeopardize that much amount of concrete work to keep it there. I think most of the other trees on, well, there's two, basically the two trees in front of the library, I both think would probably be subject to being removed, which would add, there would be a minimal probably cost increase, because I don't know that they factored in those two technical panels, did they?
I don't.
On removal? That's unclear.
I don't think they did. Couple of them did, one did, one didn't, and most of them, I couldn't, can definitely tell them that the trees were coming out, so I think they just left them, because it may add just a little bit to the cost of fill those blanks in.
And then the other thing to note, if the city engaged in it, would be specifically at the Independence Building, they would look at doing a ramp similar to what it's at 204 because of that step into the building. And so if the city did it, you know, making it ADA compliant, so we definitely would want to proceed or make sure that we had the building owners okay, because that would obviously change their entryway. I mean, it makes them compliant, actually helps their building, but that is the one caveat, too, and the price you'll notice of that ADA ramp was not talking about an ADA ramp from the street, which is also something we could negotiate in for that side of the block if we needed to for something mid-block. But that ADA ramp was referencing specifically the Independence Building and making sure that that entryway was up to par.
Well, I don't want to have, feel like anybody's been squeezed into making a decision on this if, because I'm getting a sense that, well, maybe we need to reconsider this. Do we want to move forward on this or table it for consideration?
Let's table it. Let's think about it a little more.
Well, I appreciate that. I do. So others?
Do we have a start date if we did say yes?
No.
Yeah, okay. So that's fine.
Other sentiment on tabling this to consider?
I mean, I'd be comfortable with it either way.
Yeah.
Well, tell you what, let's table it, and I will be looking for a motion to do that at this point.
I'll motion to table it for, till the next meeting on the 28th.
I'll second.
Have a motion to table this issue until next meeting? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Okay. Employee benefits and insurance renewals. Fun, fun.
Thank you. We talked a little bit about this in the work session, too, so hopefully not a lot of new information for you all as far as what the insurance renewal was looking. But the city participates in the Kansas Municipal Insurance Trust, who's our work comp provider. They started an association health plan last year. Halsted was one of the founding members of that. The whole goal is to allow us to hopefully avoid volatile swings in health insurance. We did see a 10% premium, or excuse me, technically it was a 9.9% increase in premium rates, talking to other cities that weren't part of the KMIT's AHP. I think we've seen anywhere from 13 to 20% in other pools for health insurance, so pretty happy with our renewal cost there. Mike Wise, our insurance consultant, also said that 10% was a very good number this year to have in terms of renewal. You have in the financial, basically, this would translate to around $40,000 per year in additional health insurance costs. That doesn't factor in the 10% employee contribution back, so that would just be the total. And again, that's going to be an estimated number, because planned numbers can change throughout the year as employees change their insurance elections, or we add staff, or staff would leave the city for any reason. So from a perspective, we are, from staff, recommending to continue with the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan through the KMIT AHP, and then keeping our dental vision and health reimbursement plans as well, and continuing that 90-10 split between the employer and employee contribution. The other two items that were covered in there is the city currently pays for a $10,000 life and accidental death policy on all employees who are full-time. As we started talking about potential employee assistance programs, we worked with Blue Cross Blue Shield and through their advanced company, they actually offer a $25,000 life and AD&amp;D policy, which would be almost a wash for what we currently spend on that $10,000. The other benefit of switching to that advanced insurance company, life insurance quote, is it knocks the cost of our employee assistance program down to like $1.50 per employee. So that would allow us to have a full-time EAP program in place for less than $500 a year for the entire city, which is very, it's, it's half as, half the cost of the lowest other quote we got from potential EAP providers. The life insurance, this would be improving the benefit we currently offer, and that's 100% paid by the city. And then the EAP would actually be starting a new employee benefit that we have not had, at least in my time with the city and anyone's memory of having that, and at the cost, that is very livable, in my opinion, of only $500 for the entire year for all the cities. So that's the information I have, as far as I'm willing to answer any questions or things of that nature. But our renewal date is January 1st, so we need to communicate with Blue Cross and Blue Shield if we want to continue.
Do they want to have any questions or comments on this? And if not, I'd be looking for a motion.
All right. I move that, or I move to approve the renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas and participation in the KMIT Association Health Plan for health insurance and renewal of the dental and vision and health reimbursement account benefits with no changes to the employee employer cost percentages and authorization for the city manager to sign all necessary documents for renewals.
Second.
Okay.
We have a first and a second on that? Those all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion carries?
All right, I move, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I move to approve switching the city's life insurance benefit for employees and dependents to advance insurance company proposed option two and authorization for the city manager to sign documents as needed to facilitate the switch for life insurance benefits.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
All right, I move to approve the city of Halsted's participation in the employee assistance program as offered by Advanced Insurance Company and new directions and authorization for the city manager to sign all necessary documents for the city's enrollment.
Second. We have a motion and a second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion also carries, thank you. Item seven, letter of support request from Ideatech.
Thank you. Ideatech reached out to me and asked if the city of Halsted would consider issuing a letter of support for their capital project fund grant, which is through the state of Kansas. That application is specific to work they're planning to do in rural Harvey County and in the surrounding Halsted area outside of city limits. They were hopeful or wanted to ask the city that we would do this kind of in line with the recommendation to move forward on getting an agreement for them to come within city limits and do that. They feel having a letter of support from the city and talking about what they're planning to do in the city would help bolster this other grant request. As this is speaking on behalf of the city, that authorization needs to come from all of you if you want us to issue a letter of support for that, so.
Mr. President, I'd move to approve the city of Halsted issuing a letter of support for Ideatech's capital project fund grant application to rural Harvey County and authorization for the mayor or city manager to sign.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. And those all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for that. And looks like we are moving into an executive session here. Need a motion for that.
Mr. President, I moved at the Halsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss purchase of certain properties located within the corporate city limits pursuant to the preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property, except in KSA 754319B6, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and city attorney. The open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chambers at 7:50 p.m.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We are in executive session. We are back from executive session. Do we have any action to be taken? Hearing none. We are at our governing body comments. Anybody have anything to add this evening? Derek?
I've seen that SIPs is closing, so just want to let everyone aware of shop local. Make sure you support your downtown businesses because one day they might close their doors. It's sad to see them do that because it's part of the community and...
Mr. Homewood?
Nope. I don't have anything.
And I have nothing?
At least.
All right. With that, we have the city manager, his report.
Thank you. Just a couple of things to note, that we did get that type-two survey as requested by the Kansas State Historical Preservation Office conducted by Dr. Wexley. There were no findings of historical significance. He said they had a wonderful Saturday morning and early afternoon in Halsted, were able to enjoy some lunch locally, but he is preparing that final report and will send that to the state. We did have the power washing and cleaning of the mausoleum's north wall project that got completed. I will send you all some pictures of that as far as the before and after. We plan to discuss further work on the mausoleum to hopefully happen in the spring of 2023. We have not yet heard back from the state, and they have not given us a firm date. We're supposed to hear by the end of October on the grant applications we put in for both the hazard mitigation grant and the second seed grant, so hopefully we know by the end of November, we'll hear something there. Did manage to get, as I know it was brought up in public forum, the roads and alleys, or majority of the alleys, were hit as they could be with the precipitation we received in October. As we have some more precipitation, hopefully we can continue getting some work on those that we weren't able to do during the drought. And the last thing I will note is that we, or I will be gone this Thursday and Friday at the National League of Cities Summit, which is in Kansas City this year, so reasonably close. And then also just a reminder that we are closed next Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday, so make everyone aware. And then that following November 28th, as we'll leave and then pick up for the city will begin, so just please watch the city's Facebook and website for information there. And final note, as I know we had several questions, hopefully we will have all of our marquee quotes into us from all the vendors we've been... from all the vendors we've been meeting with, and, uh, have, uh, some things for you guys to consider in terms of getting a new marquee here in Front City Hall, so. That is all I have this evening. Beyond, uh, some more statistical will be sent to you in the, in the formal report, so we'll get your emails for that. And that is all I have, uh, unless there's any questions on the manager's report.
Yeah, how about your financials, Mr.?
Sure. Um, we have the October summaries there. Um, happy to report, we are reconciled all the way through October with the, uh, city treasurer. Um, so, uh, those reports were not done to get in the packet for this meeting. They should be in your next meeting, uh, to confirm, but all in all, we are looking well. We're up about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in cash position. Um, the general fund is looking really good. Uh, we're seeing, um, a slight dip in gas, um, compared to the previous year, but that's partly due because we took in so much revenue uh, in the previous year because of the February gas, uh, crisis, so all in all, everything's looking good. All the budgets um, are still within their budget authority. Uh, we will be looking at having to amend our gas budget for this year because prices stayed elevated over the summer, which, uh, we didn't ever anticipate eighteen months ago when we were setting that gas bill. Um, so we have the revenue that has come in, but we're approaching our budget authority and would exceed that most likely in December without an amendment, so next meeting we'll be setting a budget amendment date for the gas fund. And then you can see the balances in our capital funds as far as for improvement, and then general capital improvements there on the second page. Uh, then both those balances are healthy, um, available to blow. So, and that route improvement, road improvement project budget is, uh, online there for the ninth of August, so. Hopefully we will have some news to share about when that, uh, the budget balance means as well.
Very good. Well, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Unless we have any other comments or statements, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you for joining us.